All rise, the Monday, April 27, 2015, South Bend Common Council is now in session. The invocation by Reverend Roush, First Unitarian Church of South Bend.
Great Spirit of life and death, source of change and unceasing love, we are grateful for this day, we are grateful for this opportunity to maintain and improve our city. We are grateful for the upcoming elections, for this lived experience of democracy in action. We desire full participation from all who are eligible to vote. We pledge to keep those voters in mind, and we pledge to keep all people in mind who live here now or will live here in the next 150 years as we go about our deliberations this evening. Give us wisdom and courage and compassion, so may we be. Ashed and amen.
Mister Henry Davis, Jr. Missy Shea. Doctor Furley, here. Doctor Varner.
President.
Mister Oliver Davis.
President.
Vice President Dieter.
President.
Mister Furley.
Here.
Councilmember White.
President.
And President Tim Scott is on vacation.
May I have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
There is no report to be altered this evening. The minutes were submitted for approval on Friday and apparently too late to get review and signatures.
All right, thank you. We proceed to special business. We will take an application for the Human Rights Commission. These will be due no later than Monday, May 11, in the Clerk's office. For Mia, no papers here, yes, sir?
Are you looking for non-council members with that? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, we need a motion to change the second monthly meeting to Tuesday, May 26.
So moved. Target.
You have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Yeah, explain why.
Because of...
More than a quarter.
There you go. Thank you. There's two bills that have been continued if you're here tonight regarding 1815 and 1915. Those will be... One will be continued, 1915 will be continued indefinitely, and that's the establishment of a new municipal ID card. The other regarding cell phones, that will be continued to May 26. And we will post the 5 o'clock, and the location yet is not defined, I don't believe, so we will post that when we get to that. Okay? We have reports from city offices, an update by the mayor. The mayor will take 10 minutes, and then we'll have 10 minutes of questioning from... 10 to 12 minutes to questions from council.
I'll do it in five, how's that?
I know.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be with the council. I just had a few things I want to be sure to provide an update to council members on. First of all, we're now into the second quarter of the year, so I thought it'd be a good time. Last time I spoke, I really focused on job creation over the past year. I want to let you know how job creation is looking going into this year. Since New Year's Day, the number of economic opportunities that the administration has directly worked on has led to the announcement of 531 jobs. One thing, it's always important, especially as been pointed out, this council is the difference between jobs announced and jobs delivered. So of those, we're looking at 148 that we expect to be online this year. A pretty good start for the year, we hope much more where that came from. The other interesting thing I wanted to point out on the investment numbers is as the economy is recovering and we've demonstrated a more investment-friendly atmosphere in the city, we've seen the ratio of public to private dollars on these deals improve. So you'll recall that as a matter of policy, we aim for a ratio of about 5 to 1. In other words, for every public dollar we commit in the form of an incentive, tax payment, or something else, we hope to get $5 in private dollars invested into the community. Right now, we're actually at a 21 to 1 ratio. So $2.92 million have been committed by the city, and we have seen $63.2 million in private investment committed. I'm not saying that ratio will necessarily hold, a lot of that has to do with the shape of the individual deals that have come through, but I think it is evidence of the policy and the Redevelopment Commission bearing fruit. Happy to go into detail on some of those announcements if that's desired. We were able to cut the ribbon, or rather celebrate the groundbreaking with the renovations of the LaSalle Hotel, and also since I last appeared in council, had the good news of the College Football Hall of Fame being redeveloped as a part of a hotel and a corporate headquarters for a hotel. In public safety news, we've now had the fourth call-in as part of the group of violence intervention. So far, the statistics seem to be holding between 35 and 40 percent reduction in shootings since that strategy was initiated. We're coming up on the one-year anniversary of the first call-in and working now to figure out how to make sure that we really incorporate that as part of the work of the community. You also, as council members, may be hearing from neighbors with feedback on the Armadillo. This is a converted Brink's truck that was donated. The idea was first brought to me by some community activists from the west side, and the idea had to do with a nuisance abatement vehicle that would be parked in front of a problem property. Officers would do a knock-and-talk, visit the different houses around where it was being parked, explain why it was there. So far, we've gotten positive feedback on the deployment of this vehicle, but I think there are a lot of concerns on both sides about using it, so we'd certainly welcome, especially if council members are the first to hear about either positive or negative community feedback. Would like to know what you're hearing over the coming months as we assess the conditions of neighborhoods and head off nuisance crime. Also trying to continue the emphasis on community policing. Today, another cops coffee and conversation event. We're hoping to see more of those in different parts of the city so that officers are interacting with members of the community in more of a positive basis instead of only in the context of convergence. In neighborhoods, you'll notice work beginning on the west side, Main Street's corridor program, and a lot of sidewalk work taking place, principally along the Main Street West, and the vacant abandoned task force or the vacant abandoned housing total of properties addressed now stands at 810. Last but not least, I want to close by stressing that we're really getting into the peak time of the 150th anniversary year-long celebrations in the city of South Bend. I had a chance to look at the river lights as they were being installed this morning. They're coming along well, and I think that's going to be a really great lasting legacy of this anniversary event. Fundraising has gone well. Again, we're trying to have this be at least 90 percent private dollars is what we're shooting for, somewhere in that neighborhood at least, between in-kind donations of labor and effort materials and then financial donations. And we're continuing to track to that goal, but could always use more in order to make this observation as much as it can be. So certainly not too late for anybody who wants to support the effort financially to get involved. This weekend will be the torch relay through 20 zones of the city on Saturday and Sunday, which is how we're really kicking off the month of May with the final kind of big birthday itself happening on the 22nd during Memorial Day weekend. And I just want to reiterate the call for volunteers. So we are going to need hundreds and hundreds of volunteers in order to make this event everything that it could be. I hope I can count on civically involved fellow residents as well as council members to help make sure that people see the opportunity to get involved. All that information available at sb150.com. Those are the updates I wanted to be sure to bring. Happy to defer to any questions from council members that I can look to address.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
No comments.
Oliver Davis.
Not his name.
No, sir, not the one.
Mayor, I'd just like to ask you to explain to the public about your committee of 26 for the CSO project and how important it is that we bring that project down so that our water and sewer rates can be affordable over a 20 to 30-year period.
Thanks for raising that. So the city is under a federal mandate to make major upgrades to our wastewater infrastructure in compliance with the Clean Water Act. The estimated price tag on those improvements presently stands in the neighborhood of $6 million, and there's been a lot of concern...
600, sorry.
What did I say?
You said 6.
Oh, I wish. No, I'm sorry, 600 million.
Sound like my wife.
So, you know, a lot of concern in the community about how we address that. There's no funding that comes with that mandate, so we find its way in sewer and water rates. We want to keep our sewer and water rates competitive for business and managing for residents. We've engaged professional help in order to make sure that we're getting into all the opportunities for engineering improvements, and have initiated a process to get concerned citizens involved through this advisory committee, which will afford, I think, those who are interested in... We're really rolling up their sleeves and engage citizens in getting involved in the process, in partnership, of course, with the council and the Utilities Committee to help address that and kind of get out in public some of the ideas. We think there's a two-pronged approach that's going to make sense here. One is to pursue engineering and technology solutions, anything that can bring down the cost of meeting our negotiated requirements. The second is the negotiation track, so trying to make sure that any opportunities to improve our position or even potentially address legislation... I'm talking to other mayors from the Midwest about this. Address legislation that would lessen the burden on Midwestern cities like us facing that gets all the attention it deserves. So appreciate the leadership from members of the council on making sure that this gets adequate level of public attention, and look forward to what will emerge from the public conversations with the citizens through the Utilities Committee.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shea.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm curious with the work that's being done on Lincoln Way West. I know that the plans were shared with us, but it's been a while. So there's reworking of the signals in two spots. Would you remind us what will go... That those two locations where the traffic management's changing, what will it look like when it's done?
So I can tell you about the... I'll refer you to the Department for the lasers in terms of specific plans, what it would look like, or how the traffic counts kind of went into that. But the overall idea is to simplify traffic flow, and anytime the traffic in years determine that a signal was not justified, we feel that we're not responsibly spending taxpayer dollars to keep the signal there because of the maintenance costs and also the disruption of the flow. A good example of the precedent for this is right here on Lafayette and William Street, where there were a lot of times where you're sitting at that light, you're waiting... You realize you're waiting for the light, you're not waiting for cross traffic. And so when we changed some of those stop signs, it seems to have improved the flow. That's the overall idea going into what we're hoping to do on Lincoln Way with the changes of signals. But I'd refer you to the Department for any specific details, and we'd be happy to follow up and try to get a more specific look at you.
So just to be sure, those aren't going to be the locations of roundabouts?
No, the signal changes are not the same as the installation of roundabouts for Bartlett.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Henry Davis, Jr.
Thank you, sir. You want to go to the problem properties issue with the Armadillo. As I've been critical about it, I just want to know how do we graduate from the actual code enforcement of problem properties to putting an Armadillo out in front? We used to, and by code still, have the ability to cite a problem property one, two, three times until it has to go into a code hearing and obviously receive a different citation or actually an abatement notice. Have we just like forged on that process, which was a bit more progressive, instead of just sitting the Armadillo out there and saying, hey, you know, we're watching you, we're occupying you, and maybe it will stop, maybe it won't stop? Are we still actively doing the enforcement tools prior to the Armadillo, or are we not doing that and we're just using the Armadillo to just, I guess, scare people off?
So when it comes to nuisance properties, the function of code enforcement and the function of law enforcement are related but separate. Code enforcement is evaluating things like the condition of the physical property, the grass, things left outside and so forth. Law enforcement would be addressing, for example, characterizing a problem property based on a number of police calls called to that property. The Armadillo, I think, is more along the lines of what I would describe as law enforcement, so responding to an excessive number of police calls to a property to deal with the kinds of problems neighbors call the police about versus the kind of things that code are called about. But I'd certainly say that both of those things need to continue to work in parallel in order to benefit the neighborhoods.
So are we still doing it? It was the original question. I understand the focus...
Well, yes, code enforcement still does all of the things code enforcement did with the Armadillo that was introduced.
So if that's the case, then so are we actually getting people to be removed from the homes if they're a problem property over several months or after several citations that goes into an abatement? My... The question is directly aimed at the fact that I get that we're doing the... You're doing the enforcement to Armadillo, but are these same properties still receiving citations that happen to go before code enforcement, and if they are still not abiding by the law, they are being removed?
Sure, yeah. And if you have a property... Well, I'm not sure when you say removed, you're talking about people being removed there.
Well, see, what happens is this, is that my experience being on this council, we've had problem properties before in the past, and after a certain number of phone calls or a certain amount of hearings, there are actually being asked either to be evicted because of a landlord that was being pressured or receiving X amount of citations for, you know, how to re-vowage them out. Or are we foregoing that? That's my question. Because it seems like if they're still behaving in that manner, then they are still existing in that area, and there has been a progressive, I guess, enforcement that's going on. I mean, you're substituting one for the other, and I want to know what the finality is.
I would not say there's a substitution of one for the other. I'd say both take place in parallel.
Okay, so why are we using the Armadillo? I guess my... I hope I'm not confusing you, because I'm getting confused by the way you're answering. Are we not still using the same code as in the same code book that we all have?
Yes.
Okay, so then why is the Armadillo necessary?
Well, the Armadillo again responds to different things than code enforcement does. So for example, code enforcement doesn't deal with the emergence of a number of police calls on a noise issue or drug activity.
But they always have. That's what makes the question. They always have.
No, code enforcement's not responsible for enforcing, you know, something like calls for drug activity, for example.
Well, they will always relay that conversation to the...
Oh, sure, they're certainly going to communicate with each other.
Right, so they're not mutually exclusive, they're always working together.
Certainly want that to be the case, yeah.
All right, I guess we're not going anywhere. The $63 million, what's the return on investment for the $63 million? Did you just claim, or you're saying that was invested by private?
No, the $63 million is the return on investment. The investment is 2.9.
The 2.9 by the city of South Bend, you're getting $63 million in investment.
Exactly.
And that's qualified through jobs, taxes paid out, how's that?
No, no, that's just the dollars in private investment that have come to our community as a result.
But what is that private investment?
Well, it depends. So for example, I'll walk you through a couple of the bigger examples just to make it a little clearer for you. So... Seems like I can find my page notes here. There we go. So for example, you look at a deal like the MGE Wholesale, right, this is in the River West Development Area. The public investment would be tallied at about $230,000. The private investment that came with that is 3.5 million. Now, if you want to talk about something like tax income, that would be over and above. So that's just the private dollars that have come to the community as a result of the deal.
So what the 3.5 is the build-out of the building?
Right, yeah, it's what's being invested in the building. So then that presumably would increase the assessed value, and if you want to talk about ROI in terms of like the tax benefit to the city, right, it would come from the enhanced value.
Well, that's what I need to know. It's the taxes that we get back, not necessarily the building. The building, that's their building. We don't own that. So that's why I was asking about that number. It seems like it could be, I guess, put it all together, it could be inflated. I'm interested in the taxes that's coming back that we're already using to render city services is what I was asked about. So do you have that number versus what the... I mean, I'm not necessarily interested in the deleverage cost, I'm interested in what we receive them back as the city's...
In terms of increased property taxes, I couldn't compute that for you at the podium, but certainly go back to some of the documentation. If you're interested in a specific project, definitely invite you to communicate with DCI, because I know they take that into account when they're figuring out what level of abatement might be appropriate.
Okay, yeah, because that's inflated. The last thing I want to ask is that have we got anything back from the United States Police concerning your Chief of Staff and that whole situation that happened last summer?
No.
We... Why not?
I don't know.
Are you concerned about that not being finalized?
No, I'm sure they're doing their job, and I'm sure they'll do their job appropriately.
I'm going to comment. Isn't the purpose of the Armadillo, it was originally tried in Peoria, and I remember the groundwork laid on this three years ago when you took... Isn't it to put in front of drug houses and places like that?
That would be sensible.
Right, so it's not for what I think of as code enforcement. So that's what we're talking about, is you're using it from the legal standpoint for drug houses for illegal activity, right?
That's the kind of concern that we're...
Okay, that's... I just have... That needs to be clarified.
You can't attach to...
Okay, Councilmember Oliver Davis.
I have a question regarding the Lafayette. When you turn in off LaSalle coming in, what coming in? Is there any consideration of having to turn a light, I mean, some kind of a light? Because you're coming off that curve there, and you're still having to dodge cars coming in. Have you noticed that when you come in?
... About Taco Bell.
You're talking about when you're eastbound and then you've got to turn right to get on Lafayette?
Yeah, when you come in, when you make... When you're going west, you've got to make a left. Because see, the other part, when you get into Main Street, there's a turn light, okay? But right up there with the new road that we have since we flipped it around, there should be something, from my personal thought, that there needs to be some kind of signal to make a left so those car-to-cars. Is there anything that has been talked about regarding that?
Not to my knowledge, but it could be, so I can certainly look into that and get back.
Could you please look in that?
Sure.
Because there've been several incidents that I've seen that have been a concern right up there. It's a new change. That's all.
All right. I have two questions. One, is it the Building Department or Code Department that's in charge of temporary signs? Who regulates that, signs in the right of way? Who is supposed to be responsible for that?
I believe it's the Building, but I'll have to get back to you on any...
Okay. I want that. In regards to the... Our city, the city policy and the employee handbook, does that apply to every city employee?
Yes, with the stipulation that when you have, for example, law enforcement officers who are covered by collective bargaining, or really anybody's covered by collective bargaining, it's not going to...
So other than police and fire and their unions, every other city employee should adhere to the city employee handbook?
That's the idea.
Okay. So if people have complaints, who do they refer that to? Legal or human resources?
I refer to HR.
HR?
I'll go to HR.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That concludes that section of the agenda tonight. Now, may I have a motion to resolve in the committee?
So moved.
Hold. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition to that?
I'm going to remain in my seat in regards to the committee of the hall. We only have two bills that are before us, and we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 18-15, please.
Motion to continue 1815 to May 26.
And refer it back to the Health and Public Safety Committee.
And revert back to the Health and Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 19-15.
Motion to continue and nothing.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I would like to also state that part of ending of the meeting, there will be information regarding these two bills. I don't want the public to think that we are not going to address these two bills, but there's some additional work that the committee along with the sponsor has agreed to, so you'll be seeing a number of meetings that will be set for the public, and they will be set in the evening, and most likely, they will not be held here in the chamber within the community. We would now like to entertain the motion to resolve, to rise and report back to the Common Council.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. The councils now in session, let's proceed to resolution, Mister Vorty, 1527.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3230 South Bend Avenue, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a four-year real property tax abatement for Rainbow Rascals, South Bend LLC.
Thank you. Presenter.
Good evening, Common Council. Proxy, DCI, 14th floor of this building. Before you is a confirming resolution for Rainbow Rascals. It is a childcare facility. It is expected to have improvements of 1.255 million total project taxes to be created or $160,135. Estimated taxes to be abated over the four years are $63,612. Total taxes to be paid over the four-year period are $96,523. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you may have about their project.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Chauncey Hitchcock, Rainbow Rascals, South Bend LLC, 1732 Crooks Road, Troy, Michigan, 48084. It's a pleasure to appear before you again this evening. Appreciate the opportunity. As Mister Zeeb said, and he's been very helpful throughout the process, we're making a $1.255 billion investment in South Bend, creating 30 jobs. We think will be a great addition to the city. We're very excited to begin our development in South Bend, and appreciate your consideration on this abatement for the four-year period.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak in favor of 1527 or opposition? Council, may I have a recommendation?
Move for the passage of 1527. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Adoption?
On the adoption of 1527, Court Vorty.
Mister Henry Davis.
Aye.
Missy Shea.
Aye.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
Doctor Varner.
Aye.
Mister Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mister Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you very much. Good job, congratulations.
Welcome.
Mister Vorty, 1528, please.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1702 South Robinson Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Baymar Plastics, Inc.
Good evening again, Council. Proxy, 14th floor of this building, Department of Community Investment. Before you is a confirming resolution for Baymar Plastics. It is a personal property tax abatement for five years. The new project taxes to be created are $30,883. The estimated taxes to be abated over the five-year period are $14,156, and the taxes to be paid are $16,727. The project will create three jobs, and the petitioner is here to answer any questions about the type of property that they will be purchasing and placing in South Bend.
All right. Can you name an address there and give us a brief synopsis?
Jim McGrath, General Manager of Baymar Plastics, 1702 South Robinson, South Bend, Indiana. Baymar Plastics is a small company that's employed people in the city of South Bend for 38 years now. As the company's continued to grow, we're looking to branch out and broaden our capabilities by incorporating insert molding into the ship molding that we've been doing. This type of molding requires operators to load inserts into the press, which is why we think it will increase employment. We serve the auto industry, and we have a five-year program that is committed to us that we feel will keep this equipment busy, and that's the reason we're approaching the council, and we appreciate any consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the council? This doesn't include a vice rate, does it?
I wish.
Anyone like to speak in favor of 1528 or opposition? May I have a recommendation?[1762.25] May I have a recommendation?
Move for the, move for the adoption of our resolution 15-28.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Court Vorty.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Barnard.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
That would be eight ayes. All right, thank you very much. 1529, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 5231 Dillon Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a seven-year real property tax abatement for Ameriplex Superior Partners LP.
Hello. Ms. Hefman, wait, officers on 14th floor.
Before we proceed, community investment sent this forward favorably.
My apologies.
Thank you. That's all right. Go ahead.
This abatement is for a position to be Hubble Electric Facility located near Ameriplex Industrial Park. They require another business.
Go a little closer.
Better.
Yeah, just in the mic, you don't have to come closer to us, but just in the mic.
They've acquired another business and they want to go ahead and consolidate everything here. It's going to be a $5.6 million investment with new building construction and expansion. Total project taxes, 1.9 million, 5942. Estimated taxes abated are going to be 238,000 and the taxes paid during the abatement are going to be 1.7 billion. It's going to create eight thousand jobs and that is here from Holliday to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tepe.
Hello, it's Manette Tepe, representing the Ameriplex Superior Partners on at 227 South Main Street here in South Bend. And we came before you about two years ago when Hubble announced that they were going to be relocating another operation from Illinois to Indiana and we successfully have completed all additional economic opportunities, as the mayor called it earlier, of 62 new jobs and this expansion will bring anywhere from eight to 12 additional jobs.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have some questions that were presented to me and so I'll present them to you both. Perhaps Brock may have answers. One of the concerns, and this just might have been a discrepancy error, but Brock, I had pointed out to you on, I forget what page there, where it shows the assessed value of the property and then the real property tax, I'm sorry, the real property taxes that were paid and there seems to be a huge discrepancy in that the assessed value is in the millions and the taxes paid were only like $300.
Correct. Okay, so actually while I was at my seat, I brought up the tax, the tax computer as well. It's, when a petitioner files the petition, we as the community investment don't actually change the signed petition that they, that they put in. And so they just made an error. Basically, they paid 117,000, so they left a zero off in year one. Their other years on the previous taxes paid have also been similar to the 3.2 million dollars of assessed value of the building that's currently there right now. So that would be roughly 117,000 a year. I'm happy to pull the five-year tax records for you to show you what they've paid, but that is in line with the tax check that we did when we received the petition, but also what we just pulled up on the assessor's website and the auditor's website logs at my seat between when you asked me the question.
Well, thank you for looking into it. So there is a potential problem in the sense that when these documents come to us, they should have the correct information?
Correct, they're filed before they get to me. So we don't actually, just like a state form, we would, we would make a correction in, in the wording of a petition, which we'll do in a confirming, but we're, but because this is a confirming where they haven't completed everything on the petition, which is, so when you receive a petition at designating, we bring it forward for designating, but we also do an audit between the designating resolution and the confirming resolution. So that way we can get all of the correct points. This is an up to seven years, so the petitioner has some additional work that they need to provide to community investment before we bring forward the confirming resolution. And this would be captured in that continuing order.
Counsel attorney Zakianski. Just to be sure that when we vote tonight, we will, this is a pretty significant error in that we, we want the documents to have accurate information when we vote. So what would be your recommendation? Is this a modification we could make on the floor so that the taxes paid are accurately reflected?
Mr. Zeeb could put what he just provided in summary form to the council in writing so it could be filed with the flat file, but that would not impact the declaratory resolution because legally it's the confirmatory resolution that triggers the 30-day period under state law for a judicial opportunity.
Hold on, I'm not finished. So that was one of the concerns that I would like for us to have on record corrected. The other point that was brought to my attention is there's a discrepancy in the number of jobs created between the form that was filed with the state and then the form that is filed with the city. One says 12 and one says eight. So would, is it, is it going to be 12 or eight?
We would, we are always going to review the, the case with the petitioner. In this instance, when we did call the petitioner, I believe that it was eight that was confirmed. And so we can have them adjust the SB1 or what we can do is actually physically, when we do the confirming paperwork and bring it forward, we can add the notes, which is typically what's been done in the past, anytime the petitioner has made an error with the petition that they filed and what's then confirmed by the common council.
Okay.
So that is all, that's all the work that community investment does in between that. So we're aware and we, we only bring forward as up to a seven-year because there's other information in this petition that they have to also clarify. So we're aware of those.
Okay, if you could document those corrections.
Yes.
Make a commitment to that, then I would be comfortable supporting.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Yes. What are we targeting for the confirming resolution to be presented before this body?
The confirming resolution can actually come to the common council until I receive additional information regarding contractors, things like that in the top section of the point scoring system. So we assume, Mr. Davis, is that when a petition comes forward and it says to be determined, we assume that they'll capture those points and then give them an up to a certain period, but until they prove to us that they're going to actually qualify for those points, we can't bring forward a confirming resolution. So it could be two weeks, it could be four weeks, it could actually be six or eight weeks, between the time when that petition comes back because we have to work with the petitioner to clarify everything in their filed petition.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone like to speak in favor of this? More opposition?
My name is Joseph Shabazz. I'm at 416 West, 415 West to South Bend, Indiana, 46601. Councilman Shea outlined a few discrepancies that she found with the piece. I want to add a few. I was under the impression that here in South Bend, we've done this thing called chopping off, but on the bottom of the first page of the tax payment application, you will see where this company said they spent 210,000 on equipment purchased from out of state. Now you say, okay, maybe that was some equipment that could only be purchased out of state, but on the very next page, they show what they spent the 210,000 for is for furniture and fixtures. It basically says that there is no furniture or fixtures sufficient in the state of Indiana for this company. Let me go on. When we look at the number of minority of women employees they had, as of this form, it said between 613 and 1213, they had 17 black employees. Between 114 and 1214, they only had two. They had four Hispanic employees during that same period in 13 and none in 14. They had 13 female employees during that same period and the next period in 14, they only had three. For me, this sounds like a retrenchment on inclusion rather than inclusion. If you add to the fact that they neglected to add their contractor, what they would do in terms of local suppliers, local employees and all of the other everything here, I'm just surprised that it even got to the committee to be considered. I'm surprised that you guys haven't tabled it already until they come with more accurate and real information. People should stop giving away the tax money to citizens in South Bend like this. This is a shame. And I would have thought that the chairman of the subcommittee would have at least read this application to find those inaccuracies. Clearly, he did not. There's something wrong with that. I saw that.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Right, we have a rebuttal.
The only thing I'd like to say, council, is every year when Hubble and Holliday file their annual tax payment numbers, they're very accurate and one of the best providers of information when it comes to what, what equipment they've purchased in South Bend, what, what suppliers they've actually used. They're much more detailed than many, so I would expect that the information they bring forward to us regarding this additional information will be top-notch and, and it will be brought forward to council and then the petition will be completed and filed and all that additional information will be disclosed in between designating and confirming resolution as it always has been in the past.
All right, thank you, sir. Bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Dieter. And this is nothing against the company themselves. This is a fault of the leadership and I, and this is the reason why I asked Mayor Buttigieg when he came in here about the way that they qualified the 63 million dollar investment, what the taxpayers are getting versus what, you know, the building and everything else accumulated. There's never really a true number there and it's a fault of the leadership, administration, whomever is over the department, that this continues to happen. Mrs. Shabazz has come up here several times and brought that to our attention. We've even went to a conversation with the community investment folks and also the committee itself about how these monies are being calculated, the jobs perhaps, and everything else is supposed to equal out to a good investment for South Bend and never do we ever get a good answer or even a real number, a true number. And so I think that, you know, not only do we need to rework that tax abatement form, it probably needs to be thrown in the trash can. We need to probably start all over because the enforcement there is not there. It can't be there if we always have these discrepancies. Again, this is nothing against the company. I'm happy that they are expanding, I'm happy that they are providing jobs in this area. My issue is that every time that these things come up, they just get kicked under the rug, oh, it's not that bad, or we'll change it here, we'll change it here, but you showed up a false information to begin with. And it's not your fault, Brock, it's the leadership, it's the community investment director, it's the mayor's office, because again, if you guys continue to come to the council and ask us to approve this stuff, at least respect us as a council enough to bring us real information. You know, that's a huge disrespect and so we just want to just go ahead and say, hey, you know, go ahead. Meanwhile, you know, when people come in here from neighborhoods that want to get something done, we, we strangle them. We, we make them feel bad for even investing in these neighborhoods, but big companies come in here, we parade around it and everything they're bringing in is not even true. It never, it never ever matches up. And I think it is a huge disrespect to this council, to this city and to the taxpayers that we continue to do that. It's been day in and day out. Nothing is true. That's my comment.
Counsel, we have a, is there any way, before we took a vote on this, that.
It's not funny.
That those issues can be ironed out before this is something and then we can come back and deal with it?
In these two hours.
Hold on. So let me table, let me, seriously, if you could table this and we can come back with the corrections in two weeks, then I think that would be better because in the state of all those different errors that were mentioned and all the other issues, it would, to me, would be unwise to move forward to vote on something like this because it would be unfair to the company. I think.
Councilmember Davis, if I could just point out, with regards to the 210,000 on the, on the first page at the bottom, state law in Indiana does permit listings of out-of-state manufacturing equipment.
Well, I agree with all that. I'm.
And with regard to the second page that Mr. Shabazz pointed out, with regard to full-time employment, they are getting no consideration at this point until they provide further information to the department that will then, we will then have another hearing for Mr. Gavin Furley's committee as far as what those actual statistics are.
I make a motion to adopt 1529.
So basically, you're saying that it's okay to report to them?
Yes, it is, because until the other details are provided, this council will not do anything.
That's correct. But while, and Mr. Davis, I also have to, Mr. Davis, I also have to bring it back through committee again.
That's correct.
Because the petition's not been completed. So essentially what this does is it allows them to pull building permit to start, but it doesn't allow them to, the abatement is not, the abatement is not approved, they have to bring forward all this, the remaining information required to complete the petition accurately before that abatement's approved and can move on.
Question for you. If a building, hold up, John, please. Thank you. If a building is pulled, let's say in the end we defeat this bill, what happens?
No, if, if a designating resolution is passed, they can, they can move forward with a building, but they can't move forward with receiving an abatement. So when a designating starts, you have two years to complete your project, the fore of the auditor will actually award.
The information that showed up is untrue. That's what the point is. It's not about what happens thereafter.
Captain, can I make a motion to pass 1529?
No, because I'm talking. No, you can't. The information that showed up.
Well, I'm, we've had, we've had the information, so.
Well, I'm just saying that the company, the information is inaccurate. We do business here, not before we get here, we're doing here. And that's the issue.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Court Vorty, we have a motion and a second. Let's see, Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Barnard.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Mrs. Shea.
I will pass the yea vote with the information that's going to be provided as a supplement as well as the follow-up that will come with the confirming discussion.
Mr. Davis. I think you said aye.
I said I pass the yea vote with the follow-up.
He said aye.
Aye.
Aye, yea.
Okay, so the vote is 6-2 in favor of adoption. Make a motion, we continue 1513 indefinitely?
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Proceed the first reading of Bill 2215.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana and amending Chapter 19, Article 2 of the South Bend Municipal Code in its entirety, addressing abatement regulations, addressing tall grass, weeds, noxious weeds and rank or.
John, hold on for a second. He's not dangerous to anyone.
I'm not saying, I guess.
Well, he did have a seat there in the rear of the council. He's not dangerous to anyone.
Go ahead, General.
That's ridiculous.
Let's see, I left off at addressing tall grass, weeds, noxious weeds and rank or overgrown vegetation and further amending Section 1661 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing penalties. Thank you. Make a motion to send this to Health and Public Safety, 51115, second and third reading.
Some, second.
That's Gavin and Dr. Barnard.
Okay, we have a motion of second.
That's settled.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'm at the camera, just a second.
Sir, get up there, Chief Werskowski. All right, under unfinished business, may I have a motion to send Bill 915 and 1615 to ZNA for 51115?
Some move.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Any new business before this council tonight?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Just updating everybody, you all got the letter, the email that was sent to the governor, to the lieutenant governor, sharing the resolution that we had regarding the Pocagans, getting, dealing with that whole matter, so just wanted to put that as, on the record that that was sent out and everybody on the council should have already received that.
Henry Davis, you here?
No, because I just realized anybody asks a question, I didn't want to be able to answer, so.
Okay. We have privilege in the floor, privilege in the floor is the time that anyone can address the council, anything that has not been covered tonight on this agenda. You have three minutes. This is not a give and take from the council, this is your three minutes. If there's something specific that you want the council to follow up on, you need to file a form and go that to Clerk Vorty and someone from this council will follow up later. Again, this is no give and take from the council, it's your three minutes. Again, this is no give and take from the council, it's your three minutes. Gavin Furlough, will keep time, we need your name and address, sir, and then you have three minutes.
Nice tie.
Should I have five minutes?
If you make a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Every second? Yes, sir, you will have five minutes.
My name is Hugh Escobie, I'm a community activist, uh, around South Bend for more than 50 years. I live at 3415 Riverside Drive, South Bend, Indiana, and I have been fighting the Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in this city for the last three years, really, really hard, and I have been not getting any place. I sent the mayor a certified letter to meet me here tonight where as we could discuss this Dr. Martin Luther King Drive and get on the way with it. Uh, when I first started out, there was a conflict between, uh, Lincoln Way, so when Lincoln Way got shot down, I moved to Portis Avenue and I protested from Navarre Street, Portis Avenue, December 13th, of 13, and I have gotten no response back from the mayor's office. Back in, in, uh, May 10th of 12, the mayor made a commitment to move Dr. Martin Luther King's Drive from its present location to a permanent street. As of this day, that has not happened. I don't know if you make a commitment, then you should follow through with it. So, tonight I come asking the councils, uh, to put that in motion and, uh, whereas we could go ahead and move on with Portis Avenue as a permanent street for Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, and that would be Portis Avenue and Navarre Street, uh, to Walmart. Instead of that, that bus reading Portis Avenue Walmart, it would read MLK Walmart. And I, I know that, uh, many of us know that that's a disgrace to have that alley out there, uh, with Dr. King's name on it. Uh, Dr. King fought very, very hard, and of course, it was not about, uh, a street, it was about a bus board count. I draw tears when I see, uh, John Lewis still weeping 50 years later because of what folk here, uh, did to our folk here. He's still weeping, and a number of us have never walked across the, uh, the bridge that John Lewis walked across and almost lost his life. And so, I don't know what's wrong with our mayor, that he can't come together with the Dr. Martin Luther King Street. Uh, he needs to put at least a style behind his name. I don't know if he's still here or not, but, uh, he has lost all the people that came to him, came here with him, and his right-hand man left 17 months after he was here. So, that means that the mayor isn't who he's supposed to be, I don't think, this, this is just my own thinking. Two months after he got back from Afghanistan, then Mark left, who was a hell of a nice guy, and he's gone. Now, he has one more chief of staff, and I think her name is Kathy, and she's on the fire for having, uh-
Sir, you have one minute.
Having, uh, city trucks out on her driveway, and of course, this is, you know, pretty much, uh, you, we've got the pictures, so naturally, I would like the council to make a move to, move this to the city, to the Board of Public Works, if you, if you could do that, please.
All right, thank you, sir.
My name is Sandra Brown, I'm a community activist with a group called Sister Ninety for Better Government. I live at 222 East Navarre Street in the city of South Bend. Uh, I would like for the council to give me four minutes or five minutes.
Come on, second, second. Hold on now, is it four or five? What do you want?
I want the five.
Okay, well, fine, on the record, I'm five.
Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, real quickly, Mayor Buttigieg, back in that little room back there where Mrs. Scobie brought up about Martin Luther King Drive, one or over two years ago, did nobody ask the mayor for his comment? He jumped up and just put his head, "I told Scobie in front of the news media that Mr. Buttigieg would not support moving or doing anything for Martin Luther King Drive." He jumped up, the mayor did, and said, "I will support you." So, what the mayor said, nothing ever got done on that, there's not going to get done nothing on that until, and John Lewis had walked across that bridge and got turned away when it was all black. Until we get some white people to march with us and find out that this is not right, it's not going to get nothing done. So, let's move on to the armadillo. The armadillo, I got mixed emotions about that because I'm black, and where they put it, Julian, the black areas. But, the area, Mr. Davis is right. The area, that's a nuisance. All they gotta do is send the people in there and let them know what they got. When Martin Luther King Junior, Recreation Center, was having a lot of drug deals happening in the 90s, they put cameras up in, uh, the lights out there in the park. They seen people urinating, drinking beer. The reason I know that, 'cause I ran a basketball league out of that, that center up there, that particular year. Nobody knew they had the cameras up there, so when they got ready to arrest these people and break up that, they had the evidence. So, they could stop what's going on up there at that particular place. They don't have to put that armadillo there. They have methods to shut that activity down. We don't go into our neighborhood, we set a band jump for our kids, and if you have a wife or a loved one, if she want to go up there to buy a pop, cigarettes or whatever to gas, we don't want that activity going around because they got handguns and somebody could get hurt. And if the mayor of the city, the police chief, and all the people that's concerned about our neighborhoods, it's not going to happen up there around the commons. So, I appreciate you giving me the time to address it, but the Martin Luther King, uh, getting back to that, we need the white people to march with us, and we're just going to die.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Kentay Lark, I own a barbershop, 307 Chaping Street, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, just, uh, two brief comments. The first one is regarding the armadillo. Um, I, uh, I'm pretty, um, I'm so much not in favor for it, I think is a huge mistake. I just want to mention that, uh, you know, people have different emotions about it, but I'll say this as a youth pastor, a youth pastor for nearly 18 years, we need to consider the psychological effect that it'll have on a lot of the young people who live in these areas. Uh, a lot of times, they don't, they don't, actually, our children don't have a, a choice whether or not what their parents choose to do or their neighbors choose to do, but when they come out and they have to see vehicles like this, uh, present, I believe makes a difference. There's also an old saying that says, "Discipline without relationship breeds rebellion," and that's something I think we need to consider and remember. Then also, um, um, second comment, uh, I've taken a lot of time to reflect, and this has been a, a new time for me, uh, as it relates to, uh, running for public office. Uh, this year's a year of a lot of celeb, uh, several celebrations going on, two of which, one is, uh, South Bend 150, we're celebrating 150 years as a city, 50 years, uh, we celebrate March on Selma. Uh, I find it interesting, then, that, uh, we, we go back a little bit in time around 1850, 1851, that Indiana had a law in place that African-Americans did not move into the state of Indiana at that time. I know that's pre-Civil War, however, that's where we come from. However, now, then, that we have, uh, uh, these celebrations going on, I have not heard, now, one time in a newspaper on the news, uh, celebrate the fact that more African-Americans are running for public office in South Bend, and I think the city should do something, uh, to acknowledge it, across racial, cultural barriers and whatnot, to acknowledge that we've come a long way as a city, as an environment, and as a community. That's all I want to say, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, Valerie Kraus, 4207 Norton Drive, South Bend. I, uh, am just following up on the Martin Luther King-
You step to your left, please.
I'm just following up on the Martin Luther King Drive renaming. I have done a little bit of research, I can understand your honest frustration, as I can also understand the frustration of the Martin Luther King, uh, Junior Senior Men's Club. I pulled an article from the South Bend Tribune dated, um, April of 2013, and I think when I review this with you, it'll help everybody sort out what everybody at this point should be doing to maybe get us on the road, and hopefully, maybe we can do this in time for our 150-year celebration, which I think would do our community a lot of good. First of all, um, at this time, the mayor did say he did support this, the renaming, but he put two qualifiers on it. The first was that the club needed to show support by the local community and the businesses on that route. The second was he wanted a resolution from common council showing their support for the renaming of a road. At the time, there was also discussion for the rerouting of the road. And as, as just as my aside, I think to, um, change something, if you look at the history of the Lincoln Way Highway, that goes all the way back to the beginning of the civil rights movement with Lincoln and the Emancipation Proclamation. So, to take a road that's named after Lincoln and then to rename it after another great person in that movement, doesn't make much sense. I'd rather see part of it rerouted and have two roads named in that regard in support of showing a community that wants to stand against racism, given Indiana's perfect history, okay? So, um, that's about where we're at, but a lot of it, another issue that we have is at one point in this article, Mayor Pete Flyout said that the, uh, Public Works Department had the authority to change the name of the road. That's what this person, um, Aaron Glasgow, was quoted in, on April 14th in 2013, was saying. So, that's, that's what the mayor himself said, but then later in the article, there was some confusion, because there is a legitimate confusion in the community, I've heard it on my own, about is it a federal highway, is it not, what is the status of this? And apparently, for two years now, the city's legal department has been looking into this matter. I think the city's legal department really has had enough time to figure this out, and I'm not really sure why the legal department-
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, needs to be involved in this, but I, I think you guys should maybe look into getting your resolution and your part of it done, and then, I really feel bad, but if anybody wants to talk to me about this article afterwards, to get the rest of this on the road for the benefit of our community, I think that would be awesome. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello, my name is Valerie Sims, I live at 1636 Florence Street. Um, I have two to bring forth, uh, with the new pavement of the Lincoln Way. They started the sidewalk, but as I was passing by also in my neighborhood association, they took up part of the sidewalk and did paving, and then they skipped with the old cements there, there, and I was under the assumption that they would do the whole street sidewalk with new concrete. I could have been wrong, but this, um, with the new concrete down and the old, the sidewalk is like uneven, like, so I'm going to, um, to address that and look into that to at least make it even, because I was under the assumption that the whole sidewalk would be paved instead of partial. My next one is the armadillo. Um, I was one of them who went to Philo Illinois and had, was also on the board to get the armadillo brought into South Bend, and I think that the armadillo, it's an excellent tool. We need more than one armadillo. For the first time in over a year, I was able to go to my, uh, gas station in my neighborhood and pump gas with my granddaughter in the car. There's less paper, no, uh, loitering outside, uh, the auto street, uh, gas station, and did a wonderful job out there this weekend, an excellent job. You didn't see all this even crowd, you could drive down the street last week, you couldn't even drive down auto streets because the cars coming in and out, the whole area was full of cars. Auto Street Gas Station this weekend was like a ghost town. The people that earned money and work hard, they was the one that was going up there buying gas, not the one that was up there selling drugs, selling tapes in the parking lot. So, I know a lot of them is against the armadillo, but the armadillo is a great idea. It did wonderful in Philo Illinois where the crime rate was so high, but when they brought in the armadillo, the crime rate went down, and I'm looking forward for it doing the same thing in South Bend, and please, I'm asking the common council to try to get more armadillos to the community in the city. Armadillo is a great resource for this city.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you fill out a form and tell, ma'am, miss, if you fill out what hundred block, the sidewalks that you're referring to, on one of those forms?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this council? Seen, uh, we are adjourned. Did you have a, all right, we have a motion to reconvene? All favor, aye.
Second.
Thank you. My name's Lynn Palmer, I live at 4519 Silver Lane in South Bend, and I'd like to have at least three minutes, three minutes. Okay. I'd like you to consider when you're viewing the electronic devices, the exclusions that you have, I'm an amateur radio operator and have been for several years. I know you tabled this, um, and you're going to be doing, maybe talking about this later on, on 26. Amateur radio is involved in some of those merit, uh, they move around, they talk on the radios. If you put a ban on them, it's going to hinder what they do for this community. So, I would suggest that you look into it a little bit more. I know you tabled it, and you got other things you got to work on, the lady over here was mentioning earlier, but I want you to consider if you're going to amateur radio as part of, they can use their radios within the city limits. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any have a motion? We are, so move.
Here.
Hey, how are you?
Even though they're not blue, green colored.